I will call the August Common Council Meeting to order. All older persons are present with the exception of Alder Person Katna, who notified the Clerk's Office that due to a death in his immediate family, he was unable to be here and join us this evening, so we encourage you to keep him in your thoughts and prayers. Item three on our agenda is the presentation of the colors of the Wisconsin Rapids Police Department Honor Guard. I invite you to please stand.
(inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands,
Thank you. May I be seated? Item four on our agenda this evening is the presentation of Detective Andy DeWitt's retirement badge. Chief, I understand you'd like to invite Andy up to the front for a recognition of his retirement with the City of Wisconsin Rapids Police Department.
Just real short and sweet. Andy started on this department in August 1st of 1988, and he retired exactly 30 years later. Thirty distinguished years. I don't want to go over everything the man has done, and it will be here all night, but I just want to say to you, Andy, that I'm going to miss you. I'm going to miss that lab. So, I have your retirement badge. Keep it. I'm going to shake your hand and I want to say thank you, and don't be a stranger.
Andy, if you had anything you would like to say, you certainly could do it at the podium if you'd like. Otherwise, right. I was at his retirement celebration, so Andy, if you had a couple of words you'd like to say, certainly feel free to do so. Make sure the microphone is on there.
One, two. Yeah, it's on now. Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you, Chief Paul Evans. Didn't have anything prepared for tonight, but I can tell you this. I can tell you that I am very appreciative to the City of Wisconsin Rapids for this opportunity over the last 30 years. Born in Milwaukee but raised here in Wisconsin Rapids. Very large family. And they say that it takes a village to raise a child, and it really does. And as I think about 30 years, it's a credit to all those individuals who were my mentor along the way. There's probably too many for me to recognize and mention them all. But certainly, being that I've retired as a detective, it makes me think about a man that was actually from Stevens Point Police Department. His name was Fred Engelbretson. He died at a very early age, but when I was young and going through mid-state technical college, Fred Engelbretson was our teacher out there. Was teaching the mod classes at that time. Most of these people in this room don't even know what mod class is, but back then, that's what they had in order to get your training and your certification to become a police officer. Just one of many mentors along the way. Another one was a man by the name of Bruce King, who happens to be a personal friend of mine, who introduced me, first of all, to security and then into law enforcement through the Wood County Sheriff's Department as a part-time officer in the Sheriff's Reserve. These individuals, as well as many, many more, have been a mentor in the reason that I've been able to survive in this profession. So my challenge goes out to all of you here, and the rest of our entire police department, to continue to be a mentor for our young people. It's really, really critical to provide that knowledge base, that enthusiasm, that excitement to our young people, so that our community continues to have really good young people coming up with good integrity and the ability to serve their community in many of the vocations that you all serve. Thank you again, and good night.
Thanks again, Andy. Your service to the city is greatly appreciated, and wish you all the best in your retirement. Thank you. We'll move on to item number five on our agenda this evening is the reading of the minutes of the previous regular council meeting on July 17th, 2018. Council members, it's attachment number one in your packet. What are your wishes regarding that item?
Make a motion to place on file.
I have a motion by Coth to approve and place on file. Is there a second? Second by Zerflue. Any discussion, additions, or corrections to the minutes? See no request to speak? Please cast your ballots. Oh, I'm sorry. Alder Person Rayo?
The minutes are right, so I'm not going to say anything about that. Just a comment on one, on the planning there, about the number of non-residents serving on the commission. I did have some calls on that of non-residents being on there, so I think as we go forward, it may be something to look at and consider. I don't know if anybody else heard anything, but I did a contact with a few people, so just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Alder Person Kubaszek, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess also addressing what Mr. Rayo was talking about, I did, in fact, get a call as well, and being a person, a member on the Plan Commission, I didn't really realize that there either wasn't anything in the ordinance language, or I guess, for clarification purposes, why are we adding that in? And I guess, is it typical to have non-resident individuals who are non-staff members that would be on a Plan Commission? I guess, I don't know if I'm out of order for asking for clarification on that.
I would just state that, I think, since the issue's been raised, and it's almost a request, I would treat it as a request to the council, then, maybe as a referral or even a staff response, and then certainly could be brought up as a referral and then fully discussed if you're okay with that at a future meeting, with some background and context. Sound acceptable? If you'd like to, yeah, if you'd like to address a question, sure.
Actually, the ordinance as written is basically modeled after the state law, and the state law does not. It just mentions citizens, and the legal opinion on that has been that that means a citizen of the state of Wisconsin. If you meant to have city residents on, then you should use the word resident. So, actually, this is more limiting, at least to have it be, I guess, property owners, right? And residents, now I don't remember how it'd end up being, but, so that's, so actually, right now, you can have people that aren't even property owners in the city, nor are the residents, be on the Plan Commission. So it is limiting it somewhat, but it is kind of shining the light on how it is now and whether you might consider changing that, so, but...
Thank you. Any other requests to speak on the motion? Seeing none, moving to a vote. Please cast your ballots. The motion is to approve.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Item six is the explanation of the visitor's speaking procedure. And looking at the audience tonight, there isn't anyone here presently, but if anyone wishes to do so, may speak and address the body on items appearing before us on our agenda this evening, in which they'll be allowed to speak on agenda items no longer than five minutes and must be acknowledged by a council member. We'll move on to item seven, which is my report. Good evening, council members, staff, and those here watching from home. Mayor's Youth Council has said goodbye to its five seniors that were in the program last year and is getting ready to spend the next month recruiting new members. We have room for a few more, especially underclassmen from assumption in Lincoln High Schools. They will also accompany me on classroom visits and make appearances at events such as the Club Day at Lincoln High School for their recruitment. Last Friday, one of our members, Jorian, participated in a panel discussion with Wauwatosa Mayor Eli and I at the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Chief Execs Workshop, where we gave a presentation on our initiative, the history, the bylaws, and spoke about youth-led projects that they're involved in. Surprisingly, it occurred to us that we're only one of, a small handful of municipalities in Wisconsin that have a similar youth, or have a youth initiative like ours. And there was actually quite an interest regionally in our central part of the state from other cities that are looking to emulate such a program. And then also, I mentioned to look for them at the Back to School Bash that's going to be held at the Farmer's Market on August 30th. They'll also be helping to run some activities and inform the public about the ongoing fundraising and development of the pool project. We also want to acknowledge Harrison Sullivan that's here tonight. He's one of our student observers again. You'll be seeing him at future meetings as we go forward. He's also a member of the Mayor's Youth Council from Lincoln High School. On downtown developments, East Town Plaza, RFP remains open to interested parties. I know Adam and I continue to have discussions on this topic with interested developers, and we will continue to keep you abreast as to any formal developments on that front. On Riverfront, since the last council meeting, the Demets Park grade work, riverbank stabilization, and trail work has been completed. The concrete pad was poured for the shade structure in Demets Park, and the pouring of the concrete trail, installing the riprap and grating on Second Street, was also worked on. Riprap and trail work will continue along Second Street, and an important note to be scheduled officially, but it's anticipated that a joint, or at a minimum, Public Works Committee meeting and possibly a Joint Park and Rec Commission meeting may get called next week to visit the project, as it was not scheduled when the Public Works Committee met to discuss other Public Works projects earlier this summer. So watch for that. I understand it potentially could be next Tuesday, Joe. Is that my understanding?
That's correct. We're looking at next Tuesday at 6:00 PM.
And would that meet at Demets Park, or would that meet here?
We would meet at Demets Park and walk north and then return.
Okay. On the airport, the secondary runway reconstruction is complete and has been open to airport users. The commission met on the 2nd of August to review the bids on the $4 million in state-supported projects. There was a good discussion had about pertaining to the priority of the items, since there is some discretionary nature of the state aid that was given to Alexander Field. We discussed the priority of items that were bid alternates, and ultimately, it was decided to proceed with the base bid, which is a construction of a parallel taxiway running along the primary runway and an apron expansion, the two highest need items, and the alternate, the milling and overlay of the primary runway, which will effectively extend the life of that pavement for many years to come without having to perform a very, very expensive reconstruction of that runway. This leaves the airport with about $1 million in discretionary money to consider other priorities. Commission-owned hangar, large enough for snow removal, equipment, storage, and a place to store transient aircraft, which is also a revenue opportunity for the commission as being discussed. And some construction will actually begin yet this fall, with some of the remaining work wrapping up in the spring. The YMCA Boys and Girls Club update, with much anticipation, the groundbreaking will be held next Thursday, sorry, next Wednesday, the 29th, at 10:00 AM. That is next Thursday. I guess I should put the date of the week. August 29th nonetheless, at 10:00 AM, the important milestone will be celebrated in the community of the long work that has been endured by both organizations and many funders over the course of the site selection and ultimately, the groundbreaking for that project. So hope to see some of you there. The zoo will close on August 26th for the season. I wanted to just do a shout-out, kudos to the zoo crew, gardeners, and city staff for making that facility as attractive and welcoming to its many visitors over the course of yet another season. Important to note, Park and Rec, I anticipate, will discuss the Phase 1 improvements at its September meeting, so watch for that if you're interested in participating in the discussion around Phase 1 of improvements out at the zoo that have been financed through a gift to the city and to the zoo. On East Grand Avenue, just want a quick note, issued some correspondence to the DOT on their interpretation of aspects of the design and local cost share. In short, they're reconsidering aspects of the amount of money that will be allocated of state aid to that project, and I'm hopeful that their review of the cost share will result in greater state participation on the streetscape portion of the project, as has occurred in other communities downtown thoroughfare redevelopments. Revaluation, the city assessor has completed his review of the property assessment in the city. You two may have gotten calls from folks on the subject. I did join J.R. Seaworth on the morning, or noon edition last week on the topic, but I just wanted to point out a few reminders or frequently asked questions for our viewing public. First, the misnomer that the city does actually receive any new money through the process. No, the city does not receive any new money through revaluation process or any budget growth as a result of the revaluation. So there's no windfall of cash coming to the city by reassessment of property in the city. It is also important to note that it's a requirement by the State Department of Revenue to ensure equitable assessment of property across the residential, commercial, and industrial property classes in the city. The third question that I've gotten and have gotten on the radio was around the mill rate. And essentially, our mill rate is unknown until our 2019 budget is set in November, which ultimately will be based on the assessment of property in the city, or the valuation of property in the city, excuse me. And the fourth point is, what was the net effect of that revale? Then there was about $14 million in new construction and about a total of $60 million in assessments across our property class, so we still hover around that billion dollars in total assessed value in the city. Also mentioned, we did receive a letter from a large property owner in the city about a potential objection to their assessment, and we'll keep you abreast as to the outcome or the updates on that item as well. The '19 budget, many departments have completed their budget requests, while some are still putting their finishing touches on theirs. In keeping with tradition, the meetings will be held with department heads over the coming weeks, and then ultimately, once the budget is packaged and prepared, you will receive a copy of that for your consideration to follow, likely at the end of, mid-end of September would be the general timeframe for that. On referrals, I know this was an item that has been talked about at various committee levels. The clerk did hold a discussion with city staff on August 9th, and I understand that he's continuing to draft aspects of it, policy components, as well as understanding the processes of which referrals occur with inside, internal referrals. And I'm optimistic a discussion can be had in the coming weeks as to the internal processes and procedures for referrals, both requests made by the council and those initiated internally. Since there's a number of aspects internally around referrals, and obviously, there's a whole aspect to council referrals that you all may initiate as a result of contact from the public or items you wish to discuss yourself. In the category of attended, hosted, or participated, I mentioned I was on the Let's Talk Real Estate Show with J.R. Seaworth last week, talked about the chief executive appearance on the Youth Council. And then on Monday, hosted, yesterday hosted a fun visitor. We actually had an individual that was selected by his school through a charity auction to be mayor for the day, so we held a couple hours where we toured departments, made our way to the city garage, the police and fire departments, attended Rotary, and then held a mock press interview in this room. So congratulations to Nolan Boyce, who was able to spend a couple hours viewing the city through the eyes of the mayor. Ribbon cuttings, Milkweed Market, Inside ODC is going to hold their grand opening ribbon cutting next Thursday. And just want a couple final comments. Acknowledge two leadership transitions at both the Chamber and the CVB. Both those organizations will be looking for executive directors and leadership, so individuals in the community that might consider themselves qualified. I'd encourage those people to watch those processes for job postings. The board and commission appointments, I continue to invite residents to register their interest by filling out a form with the city clerk's office on various boards, commissions, or committees that they wish to serve. And that concludes my report. Move on to item number eight, which is standing council committee reports. Item A is a report of the Finance and Property Committee meeting held on August 7th. Alder Person Zerflue.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Finance Property Committee met at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, August 7th, in the first-floor conference room at City Hall. Alder Person Zerflue and Alder Person Blazer were present. Alder Person Katna was excused. A list of others in attendance is on file in the clerk's office. The meeting was called to order at 5:00 PM. Item number two, discuss request for proposal process for shared-ride taxi service procurement and the responsibilities of Finance Committee members in the evaluation process as required by Wisconsin DOT. The request for proposal process for shared-ride taxi service procurement and the responsibilities of the Finance Committee in the evaluation process was discussed. Item number three, review and consider for approval a request from the Mead Witter Foundation for permission to proceed with repairs to the memorial clock and bell tower. There was a motion and a second to approve the request to proceed with the repairs to the memorial clock and bell tower in the amount of $720.58 by Vannard Electric Company Incorporated, and to allow future repairs under $2,500 to be approved directly by either the Public Works Director or the Parks and Building Supervisor, provided grant funds from the Mead Witter Foundation are available to pay for the repairs. That motion carried unanimously. Item number four, review and consider for approval Phase 2 of new emergency generators at Fire Station Number 1, Fire Station Number 2, and City Hall. There was a motion and a second to approve current technologies incorporated as the low bidder for Phase 2 of new emergency generators at Fire Station Number 1 for a cost of $11,980, Fire Station Number 2 for a cost of $13,170, and City Hall for a cost of $25,650. That motion carried unanimously. Item number five, review and consider for approval a proposal from MSA Professional Services to provide signal timing plans for Lincoln Street and Riverview Expressway intersection improvements. There was a motion and a second to approve the proposal from MSA Professional Services for the signal timing plans at Lincoln and Express in the amount of $5,800 to be funded through the Public Works Construction Fund. That motion carried unanimously. Item number six, review and consider for approval of a sidewalk and parking easement at St. Luke's Lutheran Church along 10th Street South for the 2018 sidewalk project. There was a motion and a second to approve of a sidewalk and parking easement at St. Luke's Lutheran Church along 10th Street South for the 2018 sidewalk project, and have the easement recorded with the Wood County Register of Deeds. That motion carried unanimously. Item number seven, consideration of a resolution to accept or reject an offer for sale for property located in the Westside Industrial Park Outlot 1 of WCCSM #10215, located near the corner of Industrial Street and 25th Avenue North. A declaration of restriction for the Westside Industrial Park provides the city the ability to match an offer for sale whenever land is proposed to be sold in the park. There was a motion and a second to approve a resolution to reject an offer for sale for property located in the Westside Industrial Park of said lot, located near the corner of Industrial Street and 25th Avenue North. That motion carried unanimously. Item number eight, review and consider for approval a request to designate the $40,000 development fee from North Point Senior Housing Development to establish a pilot housing development program. There was a motion and a second to approve a request to designate the $40,000 development fee from North Point Senior Housing Development to establish a pilot housing development program, and that motion carried unanimously. Item number nine, review and consider for approval a 2019 Wood County Economic Development Funding Request Application for a Pilot Housing Development Program. There was a motion and a second to approve a 2019 Wood County Economic Development Funding Request Application for a Pilot Housing Development Program. That motion carried unanimously. Item number 10 was a request from Central Wisconsin BMX for approval to install a new sign on the land they lease from the city at the corner of Highway 54 and County Highway W. Any improvement on the property which exceeds $500 needs city approval. A sign permit has been applied for. There was a motion and a second to approve a request from Central Wisconsin BMX to install a new sign on the land they lease from the city at the corner of Highway 54 and County Highway W. And that motion carried unanimously, I believe. Thank you, Paul. Item number 11, consider a special events application submitted by Heart of Wisconsin Chamber of Commerce for an event called Hometown Halloween to be held from 4:30 PM to 6:30 PM on Friday, October 12th. The application includes a request to close Second Street from East Grand Avenue to Oak Street from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. There was a motion and a second to approve the special events application submitted by Heart of Wisconsin Chamber of Commerce for the Hometown Halloween event to be held from 4:30 PM to 6:30 PM on Friday, October 12th. The application includes a request to close Second Street from East Grand Avenue to Oak Street from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. That motion carried unanimously. Item number 12, consider an application for a temporary Class B retailer's license submitted by Our Lady Queen of Heaven Parish for their parish picnic on August 26th. There was a motion and a second to approve the application for the temporary Class B retailer's license submitted by Our Lady Queen of Heaven Parish for the picnic on August 26th, and that motion carried unanimously. Item number 13 were beverage operator license applications. There was a motion and a second to approve the applications. That motion carried unanimously, and these are on file in the clerk's office. Item number 14, audit of the bills. There was a motion and a second to approve check numbers 73068 through 73377 and manual checks 99721 through 99737. That motion carried unanimously. Item number 15, set next meeting date, which will be held on Tuesday, September 4th, at 5:00 PM. Item number 16, in open session, the committee will vote to go into closed session under Section 19.85, parent 1, parent E of the Wisconsin statutes, which reads, "Deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session." There was a motion and a second to go into closed session. A roll call vote was taken, and all members voted in the affirmative. Sub A, in closed session, the committee will discuss negotiations and strategy regarding a development agreement, easements, and other agreements with the South Wood County YMCA, and these were discussed. Sub B, in closed session, the committee will discuss a request from Wisconsin Rapids Community Theater Incorporated to lease space in the Centrelia Center, and this was also discussed in closed session. Sub C, the committee may return to open session and take action or make recommendations regarding items 11A and 11B, or may adjourn in closed session. In closed session, there was a motion and a second to adjourn. That motion carried unanimously, and the meeting adjourned at 6:40 PM. And with that, I will move for adoption of these minutes, withholding item four, as I believe there was a question, another Alder Person wanted to discuss.
All right. We've got a motion by Zerflue to approve the report with the exception of item four, and there's a second by Coth. Moving to discussion. Are there any... Alder Person Rayo, you're first.
Mostly for, it's on item 16, we just ended up with the closed session, and I guess I need some clarification, maybe. That's how it ended in closed session, that meeting. And how does that tie in with, I guess we're still in negotiating, whatever, what the why in that, but there's a groundbreaking ceremony next week. And the question is, we're still in negotiations, but how are we breaking ground? To me, and I'm not saying it's in this case, but a lot of the times, you step forward and that makes... that makes it harder to do what you want to do. I'm not saying that what's on, might be on our mind to try and do that, you know, once the ground is broken and started, that just seems, we're jumping ahead there. I don't know, maybe it can be explained to me.
I guess I would also ask Adam to weigh in on any aspects of permitting that have been issued, but in terms of their ceremony, I would say it's quite independent of the activities that still need to get settled with the city. But I'm not sure from a demolition standpoint, again, demolition being sort of separate or autonomous from the rest of the work that needs to be done. So Adam, if you want to maybe give an update from that aspect of what activities the city has permitted to proceed that are independent of some of the other negotiations.
Right. As the council is aware, the plan development for the project was approved through the Plan Commission and the City Council. They have begun getting their state-approved plans for the overall project. So I believe we have received at least the building and the electrical permits for the overall project have been submitted to the Building Department. Demolition, when it is part of a project, is basically just dealt with through the permitting process. So they're still in the permitting stages of that development. But as the mayor alluded, a groundbreaking is more of a ceremony. It's not necessarily tied directly to any other aspect of the project.
Does that clarify? Alder Person Rayom? Okay. Alder Person Graff, you're next.
Yeah, I'd like the opportunity to hold out eight and nine.
So we'll move to, as I understand, we're doing this via unanimous consent to withdraw or hold out item eight and nine. Is there unanimous, are there any objections to holding out item eight or nine, or eight and nine, sorry? Any objections? Hearing none, we'll hold out item eight and nine as well. So we've got four, eight, and nine. Alder Person Kubashak, you're next.
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess I've got a real quick question in terms of the taxi service. With the council packet that we got, there was, and I apologize, I missed the committee meeting for this, and I'm not questioning the approval on it, but it seemed like there's a pretty strict packet that the DOT requires. I guess, is anybody able to explain that really quick for me? Thank you.
So the question is related to the process of which next steps, or is it more so the compliance with the, with the application?
Yeah. Is this something new that the DOT is requiring local governments to do, or why are we doing this in the, or why is this an item?
Tim, I'll defer to you, but I think it's, this is the second or third year that they've used the new form and the extensive applications, so maybe Tim wants to explain.
Yeah, it seems with the DOT that the mass transit program, the way we do things, has been changing over the past couple of years, but I do believe it's every three, don't quote me on this, every three to four years, we have to go out for bid for taxi service. That's the requirement of the grant program. And basically what it is, the DOT is just laying down the foundation of exactly how you're supposed to go through that process, designating the Finance Committee as the one that actually reviews them. They have certain criteria, they have to score, and then ultimately make that selection and award the contract to the taxi provider.
Okay, that leaves the balance of the report. Are there any other requests to speak on the balance with the, sorry, with the exception of four, eight, and nine? Seeing none, we've got a motion to approve. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven i's, zero n's.
Okay, we've got item number four. Alder Person's, what are your wishes regarding, or four, eight, and nine, I suppose, however you wish to deal with those? Alder Person Graff, you're first.
The only reason I wanted to hold out eight and nine is just to, I received some phone calls and maybe get some better explanation on the council floor, so other people understand exactly what that was for. That was the reason I wanted to hold this out. So it's just literally to get it out in public, so I'm not.
Eight and nine.
Eight and nine. So we can, if it's all right, we can speak on both.
Yeah, yeah, right. I think they're definitely connected. Adam, I'll defer to you to open it up.
Yeah, certainly. The intent of eight and nine is basically, the overarching goal is to basically create a pilot housing redevelopment program, I guess is how I would summarize it. I'm sure we'll come up with some fancy name if this goes through and we bring it back with the actual procedures and policies associated with it. But really, the goal is to encourage redevelopment of either substandard homes that exist or vacant lots that exist throughout the city by providing a financial incentive. Again, that financial incentive would be, would come back to the council in the future to determine what that amount would be. But really, what it does is if there are lots that we are trying to target to be redeveloped because they're in key neighborhoods, the thought is that a cash grant would be awarded if a certain type and style of house is built. So for example, if the council was looking to make, have a minimum three-bedroom home with two-car garage and a certain square footage, if all those were met and it was in one of those targeted lots, then a builder may receive some sort of incentive to move forward with that development. Again, it's just really trying to spur some new single-family home development and to help eliminate some areas of blight within the community.
Any further clarification? Alder Person Graff?
No, like I said, I just wanted to make sure it was out there, and with that, I moved the adoption of eight and nine, if that's all right.
Right. Got a motion to approve by Graff. Is there a second? Second by Blazer. Any further requests to speak? Alder Person Kubashak.
Thank you, Your Honor. As far as further clarification, I am not opposed to this. In fact, I actually appreciate Mr. Kellogg for bringing this to the council floor several months ago. But I guess the, the one thing that I've got a little bit of a concern is not so much money allocation or where this is coming from, but have we adopted the policy, or is this adopting the policy from Richfield, or are, what committee is going to have to create this? And then with that, is there going to have to be a subcommittee or a commission that divvies up the applications and all that? I mean, I guess I'm absolutely not opposed to this because I think it's a great idea, but do we kind of have the cart in front of the horse, per se, with this without having a policy actually approved? Thank you.
Yeah, if I can try and answer that. Ultimately, there's been support for a program similar to this. Again, those details to be worked out. However, one of the major concerns was how do we fund it? Where do we get a funding stream for? So that's why I've approached it this way, trying to identify, number one, a funding stream from the city, that being the development agreement from the senior housing, and then we have to apply for the county funding. And so I wanted to bring that forward. Without that funding, I don't know that this program really makes sense. And I guess also, by going through this process, then there's the desire on the council to see that program. So if this goes through, if we get the funding from the county to match the city allocation, then what would be brought back is those formal policies, procedures that would establish, it would go through finance, would be the approving body, and then ultimately the council. And within that, we would determine, is it a staff review of the potential applicants for that, or is it a finance or some other committee? But again, that's when we would do all that, that would all have to come back through, get council approval prior to that program being formally launched. So there would be a second bite at the apple, as it were.
Thank you. Any further requests to speak? Seeing no further requests to speak, the motion is to approve on items eight and nine on the finance report. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven i's, zero n's.
Leaves item four, which is review and consider for approval Phase Two installation of new emergency generators at Fire Station One and Two and City Hall. Alder Person Zerflue, you're first.
So the concern here, actually raised by Alder Person Graff at the meeting, I think, was that Current Technologies' bid was significantly lower by so much actually that we, we just wanted to make sure, and I think we discussed clarifying this at this meeting tonight, that it still covers everything that we need done?
That's correct. Staff met with Current Technologies, went through their proposal, discussed the specific installation expectations, the, basically the request for proposals to make sure that indeed they were putting numbers to the correct project, and, and they're completely confident that they have. And after the discussion, our staff is very confident that they're competent and that that number is appropriate for the work that needs to be done.
Thank you. Well, then I'll make a motion to approve number four.
Motion by Zerflue to approve. Oh, I was going to say, I don't have a remote in front of me. I did that. Alder Person Zerflue's got the motion, second by Blazer. Any further discussion? Seeing no requests to speak, motion is to approve item number four.
Motion carried, seven i's, zero n's.
Move on to item 8B, is a report of the Public Works Committee meeting held on August 7th. Alder Person Rayom, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Works Committee met at 6:45 PM on Tuesday, August 7th, 2018, in the first floor conference room at City Hall. Meeting was publicly noticed to start at 6:00 PM, but was delayed by an ongoing Finance and Property Committee meeting. All members were present. A list of all others attending is on file in the Clerk's Office. Item one was to review the DPW report. We did that. It's also available online at www.wi-rapids.org. Item two, discussion included a timeline for implementation, route changes, container sizes and options, number of containers for various types of multifamily dwelling units, funding of carts, the scope of service, the future of bulk item pickup, leaf collection, and extra fee-based services. There was, it's got no action was taken, just discussion on that. It's going to be a process, it is a process in making. Item three, it was moved and seconded to approve a request from SK Construction to extend the sewer and water on 14th Place South. Motion carried unanimously. Item four, review and consider contract modification to the East River Bank project related to work along Second Street South near Locust Street. It was moved and seconded to approve a contract modification which includes a design change of the East River Bank Trail along Second Street South between Locust Street and Witter Street to eliminate impacts to the 100-year flood elevation of the Wisconsin River. Motion carried unanimously. Item five, review and consider approval of preliminary resolutions for municipal improvements in 2019, including sanitary laterals and water surfaces, curb and gutter, sidewalk, permanent street surfacing, and concrete driveway approaches on East Grand Avenue from the Grand Avenue Bridge to Third Street South. It is moved and seconded to approve preliminary resolutions for municipal improvements in 2019, as we just mentioned, and the motion carried unanimously. Item six, review and consider approval of preliminary resolutions for municipal improvements in 2020, including temporary street surfacing on the following alleys. A, east-west alley between 14th Avenue South and 15th Avenue South, north of Walton Street. B, north-south alley between 14th Avenue South and 15th Avenue South, north of Walton Street. C, the east-west alley between 15th Avenue South and 16th Avenue South, north of Walton Street. And D, the east-west alley between 17th Avenue South and 18th Avenue South, north of Walton Street. It was moved and seconded to approve the resolutions for those different locations, and the motion carried unanimously. Item seven, review the referral list. We did that. Item number one could be removed, 21 could be removed from the list. Item eight was adjourned, was moved and seconded to adjourn. The motion carried unanimously, meeting adjourned at 8:32 PM, and with that, Your Honor, I move for adoption of the report.
Motion by Rayom, is there a second? Second by Kubashak, we'll move into discussion. Are there any requests to speak? Alder Person Graff, you're first.
It didn't appear to me, thank you, Your Honor, it didn't appear to me, Joel, that we never really had this discussion around the alleys. Would we be willing to not, to tear up the alleys and not have alleys? Do we have, do we have power running down the alleys? I mean, is it, is it a cost that we could actually, instead of keeping the alleys around, is it a cost that we can tear it up? Is that an option? I didn't even think about it until.
Yeah, so in most cases where the alleys currently exist, that, that isn't an option because there are existing driveways and garages and accesses off, off the alleys. As we do review our, the needs and our responsibilities to maintain those, that is certainly a consideration, though, that, that we have, is, is there a possibility to, you know, eliminate some pavement and, and those types of responsibilities?
Yeah, and I apologize, I didn't ask you at the committee meeting, I just thought of it now, and I'm, thank you.
Alder Person Kubashak, you're next.
Thank you, Your Honor. The one thing that I, I don't really have a question, per se, on any specific item, well, I guess it is, kind of on the garbage transition. As we move forward, I think that we've got a real great opportunity to implement a wonderful service, but I think that this is more for everybody watching at home or listening at home, in terms of, we want to make sure that we get everybody's input on there. This is something that this is going to directly impact everybody as residents in the city, regardless if you own or rent a home or own income property. But it was one thing that was brought up after that committee meeting, that there was a resident that gave a call with a concern about the brush pickup. If we get rid of rear discharge pick, garbage trucks, we're going to have to change or potentially eliminate the brush pickup. And we do have a significant older population in town, and that is one service that a lot of people do rely upon. And I understand, we talked about it, that, that we've got an east side compost facility and a west side compost facility, but there's some individuals that don't have pickup trucks, don't have trailers that they could do. And I understand that there are services available for a cost, but if, if we're not reducing taxes by cutting a service, I think that we're doing a disservice in terms of being a local government. So I guess moving forward, I want to make that kind of a, one of the things. And again, this, this garbage process is dynamic, we're, we're going to change, and we haven't, I guess, identified a, a, a final option. But as we move forward, those ancillary type deals that if we do get rid of a certain truck, now what are we going to do? I want to make sure that we know of the, the known unknowns, potentially nip them in the bud moving forward, because once we commit to this, then we're all in. So, all right, thanks.
Thank you. For, Joe, did you have a response to that?
Just a real quick response. The service of brush pickup is independent of, of our garbage. That, that does use different equipment. It's the, it's the leaf pickup. The fall and spring leaf pickup would be the service that would be very challenging for us if we change equipment, just, just as a point of clarification.
Thank you. And I apologize when I said brush pickup. I did, in fact, mean leaf pickup with that, so, thank you.
All right. Seeing no further requests to speak, please cast your ballots. The motion is to approve the report in its entirety.
Motion carried, seven i's, zero n's.
Item 8C is a report of the Human Resources Committee meeting held on August 10th. Alder Person Coth, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Human Resources Committee met at 8:00 AM on Friday, August 10th, 2018, in the first floor conference room at City Hall. Alder Persons present were myself and Scott Kellogg. Alder Person Zerflue was excused. Also present was Mayor Bruen, Sue Schill, Don Urban, John Keeshaw, Kevin Anderson, Travis Shalinski, Jay Bimke, Joe Tierney, Tom Lox, and Paul Baller. Item one was called to order, meeting was called to order at 8:00 AM. Item two was review and approve the revised sick leave policy. Don Urban indicated that the city's intent is to be fair in implement of revised policy that still provides a generous benefit to employees but is fiscally responsible. Don explained the material changes to this policy as indicated that the city has paid a total of $143,000 for this benefit during 2017. $70,000 of this was paid for three extended leaves. A brief employee discussion followed. Chair Person Coth made a motion to approve this policy as presented. The motion was seconded by Alder Person Kellogg. Motion carried. Item three was to review and approve. Item three was to review and approve the leave of absence policy. Dawn Urban explained that leave of absence policy and sick, and paid and sick leave policy were connected. When employees exhaust their FMLA under the paid and sick leave policy, they would request a leave of absence under this policy. Chairperson Cothe made a motion to approve this policy as presented, and the motion was seconded by Alder Person Kellogg. Motion carried. Item four was approve and review the modified IT Director job description. Dawn Urban explained that the pay grade would remain unchanged and the job description has been modified with enhanced focus on IT areas of systems, networks, servers, security. Mayor Bruenck indicated that it would be critical to have I, an IT leader with advanced technical skills during the, during the implementation of MUNIS, the city's HRIS. A motion was made by Chairperson Cothe and seconded by Alder Person Zerflu to approve the job description as presented. Motion carried. Item five was to set the next meeting date. The next meeting date for the HR Committee meeting is scheduled for September 7th at 8:00 AM in the third-floor conference room, but I believe we will be moving that to the first floor so it can be aired and videotaped. Item six was to adjourn. Motion by Chairperson Cothe, seconded by Alder Person Kellogg to adjourn. Motion carried. The meeting adjourned at 8:35 AM. Would I look for adoption of the Human Resources Committee?
There's a, what, there's an error in number four. Seconded by Kellogg.
Oh, I, you, yep, you told me, I would ask within a motion for a correction of item number four.
All right, we've got a motion by Cothe, seconded by Zerflu. Move into discussion. Are there any requests to speak? Alder Person Blazer, you're first.
I'd like item, if it's okay with the council, to have item number four held out.
Is there unanimous consent or any objection to holding out item number four from the motion? Hearing no objection. Item four is withheld. Uh, next, Alder Person Raum, you're next.
Uh, Your Honor, I'd like to have items two and three held out.
I would just ask if there's anything left to the report. So, um, so we've got item two and three. Is there one, is there one you wanna withdraw? Otherwise, we'll just go into the, is there one, are they, wanna discuss both of them at the same time? Because we'll just leave those two on the floor, if you're okay with that, unless I'm missing something here. No. Okay. Uh, Alder Person Kubashak, you're next.
Mr. Raum beat me to the punch on this one, so I don't have anything...
Alder Person Graf, you're next. Same thing? Okay. All right, we'll move into discussion, which leaves us with items two and three, uh, which is, uh, in front of you on the Human Resources Committee. Alder Persons, what are your wishes regarding that item? Or the report with two and three? Are there any requests to speak? Because the motion is technically to approve. Alder Person Graf?
I have, I have a few questions, and I apologize with my schedule not being able to reach out. Could anybody ask, answer why we're doing this mid-year?
I, Dawn, I'd seek clarification. I believe there was some discussion about doing a, a date that would be some point in the future, and I don't know if you wanna address the implementations, question on the implementation, right?
So, your question is on, if I'm understanding that correctly? So, basically, what we would do, and generally how it works, we would need to implement this policy first for the non-union employees. We would then try to negotiate the same policy when we go into negotiations in September, October timeframe with the unions. Doing it a, a different way, typically, the unions do not negotiate if the other employees do not have that policy already implemented. So, I don't think there's anything magical about a September or October effective date, but I do think that we would have a very difficult time negotiating it with the union if the employees weren't already impacted and under the policy. So, does, does that answer your question?
Um, yeah, one of them. Uh, like I said, I, I just have a problem with taking away benefits mid-year, and that was my question, why would, you know, we wouldn't look to start this January 1st of 2019 as opposed to September 1st, 2018, or October? That, that, that was why.
So, we could start at October 1st. Is that what you're requesting?
Uh, no, wondering why we wouldn't have started a reduction of benefits effective January 1st of the new year?
We could do so, however, then we wouldn't be able to negotiate that with the unions until their 2020 contract. Therefore, we'd have, um, individuals that have two separate benefits for 11 or 12 months.
I would defer to Attorney Schill for a comment on implementation of benefits.
Right, it's, it's not a benefit that's vested in our, our calendar year right now, so actually, we're allowing, and it's changing to a calendar year, so you're actually allowing employees to get their eight weeks this year and then have an additional eight weeks next year. I mean, right now, the benefit is just each illness, you might have a certain number of days, so it, it doesn't really matter what, what day it's changed on. I mean, it's not a calendar year benefit. So, I guess that's, and we generally, we change policies at any time during the year. Um, we're not changing, for example, a policy that says you have 10 sick days, and, and we're changing that in the middle of the year, that's, that's remaining. It's this benefit that's not tied to, um, a certain number of times per year or an event happening, uh, during a calendar year.
So, if I can add a point of clarification, the, the reason we wanna change this to a per year is because it aligns much better family medical leave laws, state and federal run per calendar year, and that's one of the reasons we're trying to align these policies with those laws.
Alder Person Graf, you said you had a, you had one question that was addressed, is there a second question?
Um, yeah, I just didn't know if anybody else wanted to speak before I did, if...
No, you get the floor, so...
Okay, so, um, one, you know, we talked about taking away benefits or, or possibly changing benefits of other people, and you said that, uh, in the last city council meeting that there possibly or potentially could be an additional benefit that would benefit more people? Have that been in consideration? So, if we take this away, are we looking to give something else to everybody else that was indicated earlier? Is that...
Um, I'm not sure what you are referencing. Are, are you talking about the, um, possibility of a disability policy?
Any other policy. You know, if, if, um, last month, when I asked the question or, um, tried to maybe get a little bit more clarification, um, it was said that there are other benefits out there that would benefit more people instead of this type of benefit? So, I didn't know if there was another benefit that you had come up with in comparison to this? We reduce this benefit, but we're currently looking to give somebody else this? Was that in any conversation, or...
Um, I, Sue, do you recall that?
Yes, what I recall is the, when you were talking about disability policies and disability be, disability benefits, um, but I don't think we were talking about another city-sponsored benefit, not that I can recall. Maybe someone else was at the meeting.
I think I, I also need to clarify here that a disability policy would actually hurt more employees here than it would help, only because group policies tend to say, first, you use your own vacation, your own sick pay, any paid leave that you have available to you. We have a lot of tenured staff with a lot of vacation and sick, and I think that those disability policies would actually end up being less of a benefit to the majority of our employees.
And I, I didn't mean just the disability policy. I just, you had mentioned in the last meeting that there could potentially be other benefits for employees that would impact more employees, and I didn't know if you had any clarification or if there was any other benefits that you were talking about that way. You know, so if I'm gonna take away four weeks, then are we giving them a different option or a different benefit, or is there something else that you were looking to enhance, or...
So, no, and I'm not recalling that conversation. No, there's, there's nothing else that we're providing. Um, I do wanna mention again, the other municipalities in our area don't, don't have any type of paid leave whatsoever. Eight weeks is extremely generous. Marshfield and Stevens Point, you use your own sick days as of day one.
And, and I'd like to speak on that a little bit. When you're comparing other municipalities to a current benefit, you have to take the package as a whole. Paid, um, vacation, sick leave, um, health and welfare benefits, retirement benefits, all of these things have to be discussed at the same time. I think it would be a disservice to say that these other municipalities don't have this benefit, not knowing the rest of their package. So, that's kind of my comparison, is do we have a comparison with other municipalities and their full pa, full benefit package to see where we rate?
So, you're talking about a total compensation package comparison. We do not have that. I can tell you, we've looked at bits and pieces, and I think the reason we've done that is that it depends what time of year and what we're actually looking at. For example, health insurance. We know we currently have a $1,500, $3,000 deductible. Marshfield currently has a $2,000, $4,000 deductible. We currently pay 95%. Marshfield currently pays 85%. And I do understand what you're saying, but it does absolutely depend on the timing and the benefits that we are looking at during the year.
I'm, I'm not saying I disagree with you, but I, I, I mean, I understand what you're trying to say, or what you, what you did say, so I thank you for that. Um, I'm just saying, if, if I'm gonna compare municipalities, I think you need to look at the whole benefit package as opposed to looking at just small bits and pieces of it, to say that one municipality doesn't offer it, but the other one does. It's, it's a tough comparison unless I see the whole spreadsheet of the whole package, so I understand.
We don't have that as of today.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, Alder Person Kubashak, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I guess I, I'll be really brief with this. Uh, I'm not in favor of taking benefits away from any employee regardless of who they are. Uh, it's a case where, and, and I, I do agree with Mr. Graf in terms of, um, are we, are we using a, a bits and pieces type of a thing or not, but I, I think that that's actually irrelevant. It's a case where I want to establish, uh, an environment where we recruit the best people, you know? And if we have an opportunity that we're, um, providing something different than Stevens Point and Marshfield, I want that opportunity to take the people that would probably go to Stevens Point or Marshfield and bring them here. So, I'm absolutely opposed to this, and I'm gonna be voting no. Thank you.
Alder Person Cothe, you're next.
All right. I chair this committee, and I'd like to weigh in on this. I don't know where to start, but I'm gonna be brutally honest. I am not a human resources expert. I did not go to school to do human resources, and I don't really know a lot of it. I think all of us here has alderpeople, as one city employee very kindly put it to me in a nice discussion. A lot of us are, what do you call, laypeople. We don't have a lot of expertise in these, in these fields. We're, we provide, we rely on what city staff tells us. For example, when I was on Public Works, we take a lot of guidance from Joe Terry because he's the DPW Director. As Chairperson of this committee, I take a lot of guidance from Dawn because she is a human resources expert. When this item was being discussed, and what I wanna be clear to the rest of the council on here is, this paid sick leave policy from the city is not something that is being taken out of a comp-time bank, a vacation bank, or a sick paid leave bank from any employee. I worked for Wood County for two and a half years. You had those three banks of time off. Wood County, it's a government job, just like the city employees have. If I got sick, if I needed a day off, I had one of the three banks that I could choose: vacation, comp, or sick. What the city of Wisconsin Rapids has to attract and retain quality employees is they're saying, if you get sick, and you're gonna be out for a very long time, and Dawn, I'll let you speak if I got anything wrong here, but if you're gonna be off work for a long time, that the city of Wisconsin Rapids is going to give you eight weeks off from work, paid, without having to go into any one of your banks, vacation, comp, or sick. You keep the time off balances in your banks without having to use them, and this is the gift that the city gives to you. Public sector or private sector, I have never worked for any employer that has given you eight weeks of paid leave and said, you don't have to take this out of your bank, we're gonna give this to you. The reason this is being looked at is because there have been people that have taken the eight weeks of paid leave and then come, come back around and put in for vacation. I'm sure Public Work Director Terry can speak to this. He has a very busy crew, and when people take weeks of leave and then turn around and put in to take a vacation, a department like his, this hurts it. Other people with less seniority are losing their vacations. The city, like so many other municipalities, is not in favor of paying overtime. So, when you have an employee that is on extended sick leave and then on vacation, you have other employees that can't take their vacation, and then you're essentially, um, forcing other employees to work short. You're forcing another employee to pick up where they expect someone else to be. This isn't fair to the employees that are coming to work every day, punching their time card, coming here and doing their job. When this item first come up to the committee, and then once I got a better understanding of what this item was, I was in favor of us going to a short-term or long-term disability policy, because I, that's, that's the standard. That is the standard for most other places that I've worked. If you're gonna take eight, 10, 12 weeks off of work, exercise FMLA, you go get yourself a short-term or long-term disability policy in which at that, correct me if I'm wrong on this, Dawn, when I'm done, but you're not compensated at 100% of your wages, you're compensated at a percentage, probably like maybe 60 or 70% of your wages. Under this sick leave policy, which again, I reiterate, this is eight weeks given to the employees that they're not drawing off their banks, they're compensated at 100% of their pay. We are offering this, something that no other employer offers, and I do think, if I was an alderman and I had a chance to work for the city and get a policy like this, I'd work for Wisconsin Rapids. I think this is a very generous policy, very generous. But as I sit here as an alderman, and I have to weigh out between having good employees, which I also wanna be very clear, I've met a lot of people that work for the city, and I do think we have some very gosh darn good employees that work for the city, and I wanna make every effort to make sure that we retain those employees, but also, I have to go back and approximately answer the 2,500 constituents of how I choose to spend their tax money. Granted, maybe 10 might call me, but how do I justify to a constituent who probably, like me, has a very similar job, where they don't get eight weeks off from their employer without having to draw on a bank? How do I tell a constituent, well, we spent $143,000 in 2017. Seventy thousand of it were, were extended leaves. We don't wanna lose employees, so we thought that leaving the current policy as is was a good idea. Each one of us here has a very difficult job. We have to weigh the responsibility of doing what is right for city employees compared with the responsibility of doing what is right with the tax dollars that the citizens of this community pay. Maybe Dawn can't get us everything perbatim, what Marshfield does, what Stevens Point does, or any other municipality comparable in size. But I have talked with the people that do work in other cities. In some areas, other cities are ahead of us. They pay more. They have better ways to flex their time off. But in other areas, I've also met people that have worked for other municipalities... But in other areas, I've also met people that have worked for other municipalities that would like to come here because when they look at it and they weigh the benefits up from where they're at to where we are, we still have some of the best benefits for city employees in the central Wisconsin area. And I think we all need to realize that if you pay attention to local municipal governments, everyone is looking for a way to save money. I don't necessarily believe in taking away benefits from the city employees to save a nickel. But when you look at something like this and you compare it to what's out there, public or private sector, eight weeks is still a very, very generous policy. And with that, I'll quit. I don't know if Dawn, do you have anything to? Did I say anything wrong? Did I misspeak on any of the policies?
No, I mean, disability would not pay as of day one, and it would not pay at 100%. It would pay at 66.23, most likely. It would probably kick in on the seventh day. Sometimes some policies have longer, sometimes they kick in on the 15th day. Up until that point where that policy starts paying, the individual either takes time unpaid or they use their sick or vacation time. So I guess that's another point of clarification. And I guess I just want to be brutally honest. I have seen this policy being abused. I will just come out and say that. I don't like saying that, but it happens. And I'm very sorry to have to say that because I do agree that we have very good employees here at the city.
Alder Person Zerfule, you're next.
Before I make a few comments, can I make a motion to approve items number two and three? Because I don't believe there is a motion on the floor.
I believe we do actually have a motion.
We do have a motion.
We didn't withhold them because there wouldn't have been a report left.
Okay.
So I, that was, so thanks for clarification.
Okay, thank you.
Four has been held out.
Thank you for that. Just really quick, last month I did want this withheld and postponed because I was contacted that employees, one employee felt that they didn't have enough time to really address this. I think we've satisfied that aspect, but I heard some things that I kind of agree with and kind of not. I don't look at this as just taking a benefit away mid-year. The benefit is still there. It's for eight weeks. It's a very good benefit. I also don't know how fair it is for the city to have to compare itself category by category with, you know, a distant city or anything like that because everyone that works here does way different jobs depending which department they belong in, and they're all good people. And I think eight weeks of your full pay without having to use any time is a huge benefit that I don't have. I do have a disability through a third party that's through the employer, but it's a, you know, completely separate agency. And I know how those all can differ, and what we're talking about right now is trying to balance benefits to the employees with our responsibility to the taxpayers. And the only thing that I disagree with what Alder Person Coth said is that we don't answer to 2,500 constituents, it's probably more like 20,000, because collectively, we're supposed to represent the best interests of the city, and that includes our employees too. But that's why I'll be voting to approve these two items.
Thank you. Alder Person Graff, you're next.
So I do have a question, and is this a race to the bottom? Are we trying to take benefits away from people because you don't get it or because somebody else doesn't get it or there's a benefit that I don't get, so I feel like I should take it away? That's one. Two is if it's abused by a few people, then we need to address it with the few people, maybe by putting in a different procedure on how the approval process works. But just to be clear, so you guys realize is that, and I'm not going to go into depth because my personal life isn't an issue, but this benefit would do nothing but help me for my son and the fact that he is blind and the fact that I have to fly to Florida every single month. So when you sit there and say that these benefits don't help people or for the people that actually need it, I think that's completely wrong. And once again, if you want to address this by the people that are taking and abusing it, then that's another thing. Let's address that, but let's not address the benefit that could help people that can't help the condition in which their kids are. And it's easy to take away benefits that you don't typically need, but for the people that actually do need it, it's hard.
Alder Person Kubashak, you're next.
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess if we're looking at this in the scope of if we don't have it ourselves, we should be voting against it. I don't get vacation where I'm at. I don't get sick leave. I would imagine if you're a private business owner, you don't either. But it's a case where it's not that. If that's the case, then maybe we should take vacation away from everybody. You know how much we're going to save from that? A lot. Maybe we should take sick leave away from everybody. I don't have that. Is that the direction that we're going? I don't have any of these benefits at all, but I want to make sure that we can recruit, that we can have the best employees. I want to have the best organization. That's why I got on the city council. And if we're talking about saving $143,000, we've got some expensive projects going on that I've gotten calls about, that I haven't gotten calls about this, about the fiscal responsibility of my position. So I just, this is bizarre to me.
Alder Person Blazer, you're next.
All right, my case at this. I believe the eight weeks is a great benefit, considering what they've had, people have had in the past in the city when you're accruing sick time. There's no way, no way an employee can save eight weeks and then also next year take another eight weeks, and the next year if they need another eight weeks. So I'm in favor of the eight weeks, and I'm also in favor that, you know, I don't have a problem if an employee puts in their vacation to make up those other four weeks. You know, I think that takes some responsibility on them, but are they technically, I guess, by what could happen here are losing four weeks? I still think that eight weeks is leaps and bounds ahead of what has been over the years past. So I'm in favor of it.
And I only was going to speak in the case that there wasn't something added to the conversation, and this is just a perspective that I've had as I've talked with employees over the last six and a half years. And that's in particular in our public safety work groups, that our public safety work groups have a standard and a set staffing situation, and their workload is far less forgiving in terms of on ambulance runs or fire calls or police calls. And we have had significant morale issues in this city amongst work groups as a result of this policy. We've had chronic users, I'm not going to use the word abusers because I'm not going to provide a subjective lens to it, but we've had users of this program that have resulted in significant morale issues for our managers. And again, I was only going to say that in the case that that wasn't added to the discussion, and Joe Terry is acknowledging he wants to say something. And I think when we have many people that bust their tails for the city every single day and folks come back after extended leave situations, and I'm not going to get into the debate of a benefit or whether or not somebody's got a serious situation, I know the city would be incredibly fair to people that have a serious or a chronic medical condition that require them time off. We've allowed employees to donate additional time off. We've done everything to make sure that employees in very tough times get treated very fairly and very well. But this is a case of employee morale, and we talk a lot about improving employee morale. And I'll tell you, there's 100 and some employees that if they were allowed the opportunity and if they were invited to come to this meeting to talk about that morale issue, this is the one issue that they would bring up. And you've heard from one employee who's got one particular situation coming up that's driving this whole conversation, and I take issue with that because I have to represent all the city employees that work for this fine city. So it's an issue of morale, and I think we have an opportunity to improve employee morale as it relates to those that are not willing to speak up. Joe, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to reiterate the mayor's comments. The reason why this came before the council in the first place was because staff was concerned it was a morale issue that the policy results in the opportunity for some employees to literally take a year off over a three-year period, and everybody else has got to pull that person's weight. And when the issues aren't a heart-related issue, when they're not a very child-related issue, when it is an issue that other employees feel isn't appropriate, it becomes a morale issue. The reason this came forth is because staff asked for it. They wanted a responsible program that offers a great benefit, and at the same time, they don't want to see abuse. And so this is, the reason this is before you is because the staff asked for it.
Alder Person Kellag, you're next.
Just echoing what you said, Joe, if you look at who attended this meeting, we had a number of employees, and Steve took the time to talk to each one, have each one of them address this item. And from my consensus, there wasn't that concern that's been expressed here. They understand these benefits, and we took our time. Look at, you can see the employees that were there, and I didn't see any employee representing their group that expressed a concern. You know, they understand it. They understand what Alvin and Blazer is saying. So I'm in favor of making these changes.
Are there any further requests to speak? Or did these are director of anything further? I didn't defer to you. I saw Joe signaling. I don't know if you were having anything further to?
No, I have nothing further.
Okay. Signal further requests to speak. The motion is to approve. Items two and three to clarify, and the rest of the report, sorry. Two, so it'll be one, two, three, five, and six, with the exception of item number four.
Motion carried. Four eyes, three days.
Move on to item number four, which is the item remaining from that report. Clear the screen so we can move into requests, if you can do that. Thank you. Move into discussion. Are there any requests to speak? Floor is open for a motion. Alder Person Blazer, you're first.
I suppose we want a motion, so why don't we make a motion to approve?
A motion to approve by Blazer, is there a second? Second by Kubashak, I heard, if the board can reflect that. Thank you. Move into discussion. Are there any requests to speak? Alder Person Blazer, speak to your motion.
I guess my only concern is, are we throwing too many responsibilities at this position? Given your IT experience? That's my only issue, you know, reading through the job description. Because obviously, I think we need probably a higher level IT person beyond the help desk, but there's so many job responsibilities or duties in here that that position's going to be diluted to where they're really not going to be very effective and helpful. I'm concerned having RCCA as a responsibility under there. You know, that's typically, in the past, has been its own department. But you know, when you add in the budgetary and all the networking and those higher level IT responsibilities, that's my only concern with that position and the job description for it.
I do think that we would have to differentiate what is absolutely critical and primary as opposed to secondary responsibilities or secondary tasks, if you will. And I can tell you that I think it's critically important. We have an IT leader who can step in and provide direction and vision for the city. Right now, it's critical. We need one consistent IT path where we can all be on. I think it's very important that this IT person would be able to address the needs of all of our departments. I think right now, we're kind of in a status where, what are we, right? Are we a Google shop? Are we a Microsoft shop? What are our devices? Some are Chromebooks, some are Edges. So I think there are a lot of very critical IT questions that need attention in the very near future. So if that helps answer your question.
I just, I agree. I just, I see so many responsibilities in here that it just, I don't know, I look at the job description, I'd be maybe a little overwhelmed, but I guess I'm not an IT manager or director, and that was my only concern, if there was going to be so many responsibilities that it would be difficult.
I do think that we would need to prioritize and let this individual know what absolute priority one and two would be.
Yeah, I don't doubt that we probably need somebody, as every time I touch my screen and my screen does not move because it's not. So I agree that there's, there lacks some consistency and, but, okay, that was my concern.
We'll just address one aspect to the volume, and I think we all can agree that, to any of us that don't do this every day, it's overwhelming, it's a lot. We did actually, and I don't have the old job description in front of me, part of the reason why the exercise to bring it back before the body was there were a bunch of changes to it, and I don't know exactly to the extent we removed things, but I do know that there are elements that we removed from priority that really didn't need to be referenced in the job description that are more of the help desk responsibilities. So, and I don't know, Dawn, if you can comment on, I mean, this was most of your work in terms of what?
So, and I'm going to use help desk as an example. I think that what we would need more so is oversight of the help desk. And when I say that, it's a person that, maybe you don't take all the tickets because you certainly wouldn't have time to do that, but maybe you have a summary and you look for patterns. Okay, if this happens 10 times or 50 times a month, that's a pattern, that's something you need, you know, you would know to, that needs attention. So I, what we did?
But in terms of removal, I mean, there were some elements that were removed from the job description because you had built it off of Marshfield's and some other municipal job descriptions. I didn't mean to cut you off, but I think in terms, I think we should address the component of just the sheer volume of work that the position commands that previously might have been overwhelming to somebody that was in that position.
And I think what we tried to do to the extent we could was to eliminate or remove some of the lower duties, if you will, that other IT individuals could do. And instead of having them do the work, make them have that oversight responsibilities instead. So I think that's another reason that job description looks a little long. Some of them aren't real primary duties, they're actually oversight.
Thank you. Alder Person Blazer, anything further?
No, that's all.
Alder Person Graff, who are you next?
I do have a couple of questions. How long have we had an IT director? How long was that position, how long ago was that position created? Four, five years ago?
That was before me, so.
There was a period of time where we had budgeted for it, but we hadn't established a job description nor recruited for the position. We also took a bit of time for recruitment, I would say, and I'm not sure if Tim's got a number, a date, a year off the top of his head, but we had an incumbent in the position for about a year. I would say it was created maybe three, four years ago, would be my recollection, so between 14 and 15, somewhere in there.
And I guess that kind of plays into my question is, you're looking for a little bit of oversight, so did our past IT director give oversight for the new computer program that we approved? Because with conversations that I had is that nobody really looked to the IT director for approval of or for his opinion.
I won't comment, I think it'd be out of order to comment on his performance, but certainly it was in his job description.
Not in the conversation. I'm bringing up a point.
You're asking a question on a past employee's performance.
No, what I'm saying is, is did we take the direction of an IT director when we had one in place?
On Munis, the actual selection, there was actually a report and a summary prepared. I mean, between the finance director and the HR director, they, the team of the three, consulted on various aspects of that project, absolutely. I don't know to the extent you can go into depth or make sense to go into depth, but was there involvement by the IT director? Without question. In fact, there was coordination that had to have been, whether it was oversight or actual activities performed by that person.
So is your question, did this person, our former IT director have, was he or she involved in the selection? The answer is yes.
My question is basically, did we utilize that position the way we should have? Or have we been utilizing that position the way we should? So we created an IT position, we put somebody in there regardless of his performance, regardless of the performance. What I'm saying is, is we went, we've had it in the budget for four years, we've only exercised an IT director for less than one year. Do we need it? I guess is my question.
I would think that as a department head and other department heads can certainly weigh in on this, but absolutely, I mean, I am missing items every day that I need. For example, I tried to run a meeting in conference room one with a Mondo pad, couldn't find an IT person. find an IT person. When I found someone, it was an IT person that specializes in GIS, and you know, that's a niche skill set. She wasn't real familiar with the Mondo pad. So that's just one example. I know, Joe, you've had, if you want to weigh in on that?
Real briefly, yes. The, the, the primary issue that I think the department heads have is that there's a, a lack of, of IT organizational structure. The, the city evolved its computer system with, with staff that had knowledge without, without kind of that principal person to suggest policies. We have challenges with access to data within our own departments, you know, between departments, file structure, just, just a variety of things that, I, I won't call it Wild West, but that's kind of the way it feels. You know, all, all the departments did the best they could in, in establishing how they use data and how they use the, the computer system. And we really lack that guidance, and we need that to be more efficient, to, to be able to share data within our departments and, and find things at ease. I mean, right now, we don't have a fully indexed file system. It's, it's very challenging and time consuming even to find data within our own department. So, so there's some productivity concerns that we have because we don't have those policies. And we really need a strong leader to oversee the IT department, to, to put those types of policies in play, and then let the, the other expert IT staff focus on, on, on really their, you know, their, their strengths and, and, you know, assisting staff with, with technical issues.
No, I, I understand, and that's why it's, it's really to clarify, and I just want to make sure, is this a service, is it a temporary position? So once we get the idea, or once we get the, the, how do I want to say, this cross communication between staffs and the, the filing all set up? I, I guess what I'm asking, is this a service that we could legitimately hire out to have some oversight on?
I'll weigh in on a couple of comments. I think it's really important for all of us to be understood on this question of need, and so thank you for raising it. I think a little more perspective, historically, the city had contracted with the Water and Light Utility to provide oversight for our help desk support. And while as a time, generally a time materials arrangement, the value that the city received for the amount we paid our utility for the time we were able to get of that person was very minimal, that there was a, a better cost benefit analysis that we did by hiring somebody that we could bring internally. And on the question of outsourcing, we have discussed that. And I think Tyler Munis is a prime example of the, the expense, the sheer cost of actually having to outsource your IT. If I was in the IT business yet, I would love the city's business, because it's a very lucrative business to be in if you're performing service for another client. So it's much more effective and there's a tremendous value to be, to, to have an actual staff member providing the coordination, the direction, the leadership for IT initiatives. And I think we've explored, we've looked at vendors for bringing in, we've actually had to pay vendors over the course of some time and said, well, why the heck are we paying vendors for, at a time materials basis, very, very costly on a per hour basis? Then we could be providing that service internally and achieving a lot more value. And so I think that's really where we arrived at why we hired and, and maintained this, this, this ask for the changes to the job description, ultimately to hire a director of IT. Because without it, departments' file systems are a mess. We, you want a record from the clerk's office, go look for it, and he'll probably get back to you in about three days to find it. The archiving of all of the city's records are just, you know, there's just no, it's chaos. And, and I think it's unfortunate, and I'll assume full responsibility for why this hasn't occurred and it was a vision, I mean, folks that were around a number of years ago can remember, a world that wasn't all that better than it is today. And it's a deficiency and it needs to be addressed, and my hope is that through the, the reshaping and the review of the job description and a market that maybe is more favorable to the city to hire, that we could, we could fill the position and get somebody sharp in the role. But I am, I am concerned, our ability to pay for that position. You look at any private sector position of this job description, they're paying at least $20,000 to $30,000 more a year. So you got to find somebody that likes public sector, that loves our beautiful benefit package and likes to work for municipal government, and I think in order to, to ultimately fill the position. So, but I appreciate your question of need. We certainly have evaluated and we could offer a proposal if we were to do a time of materials. I would venture to guess, you're going to, you're going to pay nearly two to one if you were to hire on a per project basis for the maintenance obligations and some of the other projects that, that would, would be run by the department or the director itself.
And, and that's the thing, is I don't want this to become, okay, we hire an IT director, he fixes our, our cases and, and we get the filing system set up, the communications set up, and then all of a sudden, we decide, well, we don't need an IT director. The sustainability...
I think we assess all of our department heads, I mean, you know, we, we, we had an exercise where we reviewed, do we need an IT director, right? You know, in the form of a vacancy or anything else, I think it's incumbent upon every employer to assess whether or not you need people for certain jobs as, as time goes on. So I'd be the first to admit, if we came to the day where this person was twiddling their thumbs, didn't know what they were doing, I'd be the first person in this room asking for the elimination of that position. But I can't speak for other people that might hold the position too. So I appreciate your concern about value to the taxpayer, but also, is there work and responsibility for that person? And I think we've, we've probably hit that well enough, and I'm happy to address it further if there's specific questions of need.
Anything further, Alderperson Graff? Nothing further? Alderperson Kubasak, you're next.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through this discussion, it, it almost seems like we're looking for a magician rather than an IT person. And I'm looking at this public document that says salaried, what's the salary range? And like you just mentioned, Mr. Mayor, the private sector's paying a lot more for what we could potentially pay. So I, I, I would love to find a person that's got experience in Apple, Android, IBM software, then you're talking about hardware's Chromebook, PC, Apple. But the reality is, we had someone and then we don't have them anymore. So are we going to keep on trying to find someone to fit our needs or potentially contract out? I mean, that's, that, we do it with everything else, we're just talking about cutting benefits. So I mean, it's a case where I would like to see a cost benefit analysis in front of me before we move forward and hire someone. Because it, again, it's, this is, we're, we're trying to find someone and it's addressed. The indexing, city hall's a mess, clerk's office is a mess, everything's a mess. We need David Copperfield then. So I, I don't know how much, I mean, and I know David Copperfield is not cheap. So by, by trying to locate someone, I, I don't know. I, I think that we've got the cart in front of the horse on this one.
Can I?
Yeah, Don, go ahead.
So I, I do hear your concerns, absolutely, and I think, you know, the salary will be an absolute challenge. I, I know that it, it would be hard to do a comparison, because, for example, we may use someone like Heartland for servers, or, you know, every week, we may need something different. It might, might be a systems issue the next week. I think it would be a very difficult thing, because it would depend on the timing. With Munis, it's going to be who can come in and install that system and configure the server correctly. You know, that's just one project. So it would, the challenge with that, I think, would be finding vendors, niche vendors that can come in. I would agree that overall, you would probably pay these vendors more than what you end up, end up paying a director. I do think it will be a challenge to find a person, and I wouldn't be surprised if we would need to come back to our committee, because we may have to pay more than that, the pay grade in the step six, where we typically have to come and get approval.
Ms. Urbin, a real quick follow up. What is the salary range that we're looking at for this right now?
So, I mean, the, the target that we've set is mid to high 80s. I would anticipate we may have to go higher than that, and that would take committee approval to do that. If we were, if I could compare this to private sector, I would say you'd be looking at 118 to 130.
Alderperson Blazer, you're next.
I was just going to echo some comments that five years ago, we did have a person here, I thought, did pretty well. And I think with a help desk person, it would have been even better. But to Mr. Graff, I, I think there definitely is a need, just even from years ago. You know, there's a lot of work, you know? I remember watching him pull cable and being here on the weekends. So I, I do believe there's a lot of work. My only concern, I'm going to go back to it, is obviously the salary. And by what we're, the expectations of this job description, is that going to dissuade people from coming in at that salary range with these responsibilities? But I, I do agree that we need somebody here full time to manage that.
Thank you. Are there any further requests to speak? There is a motion and a second on the floor. Anything else from Don or Alderperson? See no further requests to speak? Go ahead with the motion, if you wouldn't mind.
Yeah. The motion on the floor is to approve item four of the HR report, so approve the modified IT director job description. So go ahead and cast your ballots. Four ayes, three nays.
Thank you. Move on to item number nine, miscellaneous reports. Item one is the Southwood County Airport Commission meeting is held on June 7th, June 28th and July 19th. Item two is the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting held on July 24th and August 14th. Item three is the Joint Review Board meeting held on July 24th. Item four is the McMillan Library Board of Trustees meeting held on July 18th. Item five, the Mayor's Youth Council meeting held on July 25th. Item six, the Police and Fire Commission's meeting is held on July 11th and, and August 8th. Item seven, the Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department monthly update for July. And item eight, the Wastewater Treatment Commission meeting held on August 1st. Alderpersons, what are your wishes regarding those reports?
Make a motion to approve the reports.
A motion by Zurflue. And a second by Blazer. Alderperson Raum, you're first.
Thank you, Your Honor. I know it's just a formality to put these on file and whatever, but knowing that Board of Zoning Appeals, the recommendation from staff wasn't followed on these, and, and I'm not saying that always it should be, should be, that the commission should look at things and make a decision, but it just seems to be, some of these are becoming more of what the person wants, that addresses or asks for it, that becomes that than the reasons of why not. Because in the, which, let's see, that it, one, it had on a, I think the parking one it was, that there were different alternatives for, for the parking in that. Yet, as I understand it, it's what the applicant wanted. And so that's why I just bring the issue up, is that, you know, if there is other ways to address the issue, that's where I think the commission, committee there needs to look and address it in a, in a, in open mind, and that maybe it is to do something different other than what they've asked for. But that's, I just wanted to make that comment, and all these just go through and get passed, not really passed, I guess, we just accept the minutes. I just wanted to bring that up for thought as we go on.
Thank you. And I just was clarifying, sorry for the side chat with the attorney here, on sort of the recourse that the council may or may not have in certain circumstances. So it, it appears that in, in instances where the meeting is close to the council meeting, there may be an ability to appeal on the city's behalf. So there, in terms of leverage, or where other additional recourse may occur. So I, I do share your sentiment, because I've been on the, on the minority on a lot of these issues when the Board of Zoning Appeals has taken action. Unfortunately, we've got really low turnout with the Board of Zoning Appeals, and, you know, I think there's a lot of areas. I don't know, Adam, did you want to comment anything further on Alderperson Raum's question? You've been in the minority as well.
Yeah. I, I mean, I don't think there's anything that can constructively be discussed here, but I'd be happy to discuss it offline with any aldermen who have concerns with the current zoning board.
Alderperson Kubasak, you're next.
Real quick, I, I think that residents have also a recourse as well. Anybody that lives in the city can sue the city or fine suit for that. So there are other remedies as well.
Thank you. See no further requests to speak. The motion is to approve the reports and place them on file. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Seven ayes, zero nays.
Item 10 is referral of communication to committees. There's nothing listed. Is there any referral of communication to committees? Alderperson Raum?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to, people have brought this issue up to me, constituents in my district and, not in my district, but, and I, there's a long story of history behind, I think, why what is there is there. Has to do with the Norton Pond. It's heavily posted to not be there. It has been brought up of white people, if they're riding their bikes, that they can't stop and walk around, people walking their dogs, why they can't go there and wa, and walk around. The sign has that it's private lands, no trespassing or other use prohibited, except by express permission of the common council of the city of Wisconsin Rapids. So I guess we can't do that. But I, so I'd like us to take a look at it, because people have inquired about it. Actually, it's not, it, it looks like it'd be a nice place to walk around. There is a history behind it, I won't deny that, of, of what, why some may say not. But I would like to have this, that we discuss it at some point here.
All right. Thank you. We've got a request to discuss the Norton Pods, Pond situation. Alderperson Graff, you're next.
Yeah, I would like to make a recommendation to the committee of the whole for the YMCA Community Theater discussion that keeps going, ongoing. I'd like to, I think we should send it to the committee of the whole and have a vote either way and give clear direction moving forward.
All right. Alderperson Blazer, did you withdraw your... Oh, you're still here. I don't know what happened to it. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Let's try for a third month. My referral is to council to eliminate residency once and for all. Direct referral. I'm looking to repeal it, just get rid of it once and for all. Bit frustrated, you know, I, I think a lot of these referrals need to go to the chairman, and then the chairman needs to put them on the committee if they choose to do so. Sometimes I think our referrals get caught in a clog at City Hall, and I, I want to know staff recommendation, but I don't think staff recommendation should determine whether or not a referral is going to be placed on an agenda. So my referral is to council that we eliminate residency once and for all. Thank you.
Attorney Shields, did you have something?
Yeah, that, that's the type of thing that has to go through a committee first. It, that's a matter that's within the purview of a committee, so it needs to go to a, the HR committee first.
Okay. That's what I was, I was going to, last month, and that has not happened. So I'm asking the chairman to put it on the HR committee, please.
Alderperson Kubasak, you're next.
Interestingly, I want to make everybody aware of, we're kind of talking about this referral process, and in the December issue, December 2017 issue of the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, has got a very thorough write-up by Daniel Olson, who was the former assistant legal counsel. Now, Daniel has, I think he's a corporation counsel for Sauk County, but he, he put together a wonderful narrative of how referrals or agenda items should be done. And again, if, if you don't have the magazine, if you're a brand new alderperson, if you didn't receive it, you can actually go to the League of Wisconsin Municipalities website. And if you scroll down, all the way down to news, if you click on news, then it'll bring up the ability to look at previous issues, and then scroll down until you get to December of 2017, and I think it's page 22 on the PDF document. So it's, it's very interesting, and I, I look forward to having a referral process, I guess, created from that. So that's all I got.
Thank you. Alderperson Blazer, we'll go back to you.
Yeah, I was just going to say, if we're going to have a committee of the whole, in the meantime, that'd be fine if it could sit there, because... the meantime, that'd be fine if you could sit there, because obviously, the HR committee time does not serve well for most. So I will not be able to attend at that time. But I do appreciate it being taped and getting a, a link to be able to watch it, which I enjoyed being able to hear that discussion.
Thank you. Are there any further referral of communication to committees? Seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn. A motion by Zurflue. Second by Kubasak, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you all for being here and for the spirited discussion. Enjoy your evening.